Commission staff meeting, um, March 5th. Gosh, this year is flying. March 5th, 2024. I'd like to have everyone introduce themselves on the day.
Chrissy Rishel, Assistant Clerk.
Leslie Hervey, Clerk to the Board.
Stephanie Summerold, Dumas Commissioner.
Good afternoon, I'm County Commissioner Denise Treehouse.
Jeff Ludo, County Administrator.
Charlie Anis, Prosecutor's Office.
And I'm Hamilton County Commission President Alicia Reese. Um, we have a very good agenda today. We're going to start with the youth sports assessment interim report. I'm going to have Jeff Ludo say a word at first, but I want to kick off to say we also have some interested parties that are also here today that were, um, part of the study. Um, and people I believe were talked with, but we have the City of Cincinnati Assistant City Manager Natasha Hampton who was with us, uh, Queen City Sports Plex Christine Ropp and Isaiah Voldrick. We have our Mayor of Forest Park, Mayor Aaron Brown. Uh, we have Patrick Longo of Alloy Development. And we have the Ohio Soccer Association Gordon Henderson, who is the CEO of the Ohio Soccer Association. And, uh, we also have, uh, Mr. Goodyear, uh, who's here, who also, um, his organization is looking, um, to develop, uh, this and, and host over 3,000 tournaments a year. So, welcome, I will turn it over to Mr. Ludo, then he will.
Yeah, Commissioners, thank you. And I'm going to turn it immediately over to Assistant Administrator, uh, Chris Mann. She's been working with, uh, Walter Franco from Victus Advisor for, um, almost going on the past nine, eight, nine months now or so, uh, to get us to the first stage of this interim report. So, Holly, I'll turn it over to you.
Before, before Holly goes and I open up, any Commissioner wants to say something, I do want to say that, uh, how we've kind of gotten here, one of the things that, um, as we were putting our budgets together and different things, we're looking at, we're looking at ways that we can bring money into the county. And one of the areas that I saw we were missing out on is the, uh, youth amateur sports. Uh, it's about a $93 billion industry from tourism perspective. And people are trying to, uh, have those things all around us. I think Kentucky tried to do it as well. Uh, but we are missing out and we've got some of the top athletes. Our board has honored a lot of athletes, uh, state champions, et cetera. Um, and we have to leave a lot of times to do these tournaments and a lot of money, um, that we're putting out there. I'll just speak for myself, I'm just the auntie and I'm, my pocketbook is getting really slim. I've got, I've got nieces and nephews in tournaments and I'm running everywhere, but we want to try to bring people here. And we were looking at some of the suburban land and area. So our board, I want to thank the board, uh, that went along to say, let's study this issue and bring folks in and see, uh, what we can do and what we're missing and where do we go possibly from here? So, uh, I wanted to, to articulate that. Uh, any other Commissioner would like to say something? Uh, before we go to Holly, I could.
No, just wait for.
All right, Holly.
Thank you.
Take it away.
Um, um, just to, not to reiterate too much of what just was stated, but, um, for the public listening, in 2023 budget, the board did authorize funding for a market assessment and feasibility study for youth, um, slash amateur sports infrastructure. And through an RFP process last year, uh, the county entered into a consulting agreement with Victus Advisors to provide this review. Um, the review is divided into two phases. And the first one is what we're here to discuss today. Phase one is a facility assessment and market demand analysis. And this really is, is there demand for, uh, potentially an additional facility within Hamilton County? Phase two, if we, um, based on board direction, will be operational, financial, and an economic analysis. Um, and again, like I said, Victus just completely, uh, recently completed, uh, phase one, and we are seeking direction from the board prior to initiating, um, phase two of this study. So I'm happy to answer any questions, but really the expert right now is Walter Franco, who I'm pleased to introduce to the board. I know you've all talked with him as part of the initial process in getting this program kicked off. And he is, um, available virtually to walk through the presentation on, um, phase one of their report and answer any questions you have. So with that, I'll introduce you to Walter Franco.
Uh, good afternoon, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Let's, let me see here.
Yes.
Good afternoon, can everyone hear me? Okay, perfect. Thank you. Well, good afternoon, uh, first and foremost to the Commissioners, uh, and to everyone else in attendance, and, uh, appreciate the opportunity to summarize our, uh, phase one findings for this, uh, assessment that we have been consulted or hired by Hamilton County for the benefit of Hamilton County. So I'm going to quickly, um, share my screen here. Um, and I just want to make sure that everyone can see this clearly. I'm going to put in presentation mode here. Um, every, every community has different technologies, so I just want to make sure that, uh, this works. Can everyone see this okay?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So again, uh, I am Walter Franco with Victus Advisors. Uh, we started, uh, this, uh, study, uh, and assessment, uh, for a potential youth sports facility or facilities for Hamilton County, um, in late, uh, or sorry, late summer, early fall of, uh, 2023. Um, we, uh, went to, um, Hamilton County, uh, to kick off the project a few months ago, uh, to speak with various stakeholders, um, to get a lay of the land, get an understanding of what's currently available, uh, in terms of, uh, access for youth sports groups within Hamilton County and also, uh, what's currently existing within Hamilton County that can generate economic impact. As, uh, Commissioner Reese mentioned, and just to kind of pick it back off her comments, um, you know, the genesis or the, the purpose for this study was to see or identify potential opportunities, um, for facilities that could generate economic impact via, uh, youth and amateur sports events that would be bringing people from outside of Hamilton County. And as, uh, Camp Commissioner Reese can attest and many others in the audience, uh, either from visiting, you know, traveling for family or children or even themselves in their personal experience for travel teams, um, it is a very, very big business, uh, youth and amateur sports tourism. And, um, our purpose and our goal that we do these studies throughout the country is to identify, you know, is there opportunity for, uh, Hamilton County to capitalize on that industry? And if there is, uh, what are the recommendations, uh, that make the most sense for Hamilton County, uh, to be able to capture that, uh, activity? So to highlight here again what we've done, um, we, so far, we've developed a comprehensive profile of the strengths and the weaknesses of Hamilton County as a sports market. Uh, so that required, uh, you know, a little, I'll show the, the chart in just a second, but a little bit of primary and secondary data in terms of understanding what the demographics were in Hamilton County, growth trends, and also, uh, you know, what, what's currently within the market. We've also, uh, Part B is sports tourism marketing and facility opportunity analysis was developed, an analysis of, uh, what the opportunities could be for Hamilton County based on all the inputs that we did in, uh, Part A of that, uh, market demand analysis. As you can see here, uh, our secondary market research was, uh, diving into the demographic and socioeconomic, uh, characteristics of Hamilton County, looking at what's currently, uh, what the current sports facilities are, that are available in Hamilton County that are used by local sports groups, not just for local practices, but also, uh, you know, are any facilities currently used, uh, to draw sports tourism events? Uh, we also looked at, uh, comparable sports markets, so markets that, uh, Cincinnati, or excuse me, Hamilton County slash Cincinnati currently competes with, um, for sports tourism activity. And also we looked at facilities that are, are outside of Hamilton County, but within the Cincinnati MSA. So Spooky Knuck Champion Mill, for example, um, in Hamilton, uh, and other facilities within the market that could potentially be competitors to any, uh, new facilities that would be, that could be potentially developed in, uh, Hamilton County. As part of our primary market research, we conducted an online survey, uh, with several hundred, uh, Hamilton County residents to get an understanding of what they perceive as, uh, what's available, uh, for Hamilton County residents, what they would like to see out of a new sports tourism facility, and also get their feedback on where they travel to, uh, for sports tourism travel. And as I had mentioned before, as part of our kickoff meeting, we spoke with stakeholder, uh, different various stakeholders in the community, both at the civic level, also at the business level as well, to understand their perceptions and, and also ultimately support for, uh, additional, uh, sports facility development. And then we also spoke with sports, uh, local sports groups and also regional and national sports groups to see what their perspective was on Hamilton County as a potential market for, uh, sports tourism. So all, all those, uh, inputs gave us the output of what we were able to identify as, um, you know, what the strengths, the weaknesses, the opportunities and the threats were for Hamilton County and also make, uh, facility, uh, recommendations on what could benefit, um, Hamilton County, both in the short term and in the long term. So what, as I mentioned, one of the first things that we're looking at is, uh, from a demographics, from a geographical sense as well, as you can see where Cincinnati is located, within a five, within a two and a half hour drive time, two and a half hour to three hours, um, there's about just under 12 million people, um, that since that Hamilton County can draw from for sports tourism events. And when you draw that out to, uh, between five to six hours from for sports tourism events, and when you draw that out to, uh, between five to six hours, um, that's over 44 million people. And so from geographic standpoint, uh, Hamilton County is actually in a very advantageous position. As you can see from north to south to east to west, it's in a very, uh, unique, uh, geographic position, given that for youth sports tourism, it's, uh, the majority of travel is typically by, um, by car. Uh, you'll, you will have some events that will require some travel via airplane, but that's usually major national events, but a lot of the sports tourism events are typically regional, sectional, uh, state level, uh, events. And so from a population standpoint, you know, Cincinnati is in a very, very unique and advantageous position. When you, we, when you look at other studies that we've completed throughout the country, specifically on the West Coast, so I'm located in Utah, um, you know, our next biggest market from Salt Lake City is, uh, Las Vegas, which is about five and a half hours. The next biggest one after that is Denver, which is about eight hours. And that's just, you know, for capturing 10 million people. But when you look at, you know, as you get closer towards the East Coast, towards the Midwest, that's where you have a lot of high populations. And so again, Hamilton County really can draw from, uh, dozens of millions of potential, uh, visitors, uh, through sports tourism. One of the key, uh, components of sports tourism, in addition to the location, is also, uh, the access to, uh, hotel and other amenities. And so as you can see here by these red dots, uh, this is all within Hamilton County. Uh, there's a really long, uh, I-71 and along, uh, I-74 as well, is you do have numerous hotels. And when I speak of, uh, uh, these hotels, again, Commissioner Reese can speak to this and also others that are in attendance that are, are familiar with youth and amateur sports, uh, travel, uh, participants and families, they want to stay in family-friendly hotels such as Fairfield Inn and Suites, Holiday Express, uh, Holiday Express, where they offer free breakfast, continental breakfasts, et cetera, that's accessible, that they have multiple beds in the room, um, they have indoor pool or outdoor pool in some cases. And, uh, from that standpoint, uh, Hamilton County already has that infrastructure, which is a very, uh, which is a positive. So again, speaking on the location, geographically and hotel, those are already two fa- uh, positives, um, in, uh, in favor of, uh, Hamilton County as it relates to sports tourism. Another key component as well is what else is there to do when you're in the market? So, um, if you've ever traveled for youth and amateur sports, you're going to travel with the whole family and you're not just going to want to go to an event, you're going to want to see what else the community has to offer, whether that's through museums, through parks, uh, through amusement parks, et cetera. And again, Hamilton County, uh, has all of these things. They have museums, they have professional sports from, especially from the NFL to, um, MLS and to MLB, and a lot of these sports that overlap throughout the year. So there really is something always to do, uh, within, uh, Hamilton County. The other key component about this too, that I think is sometimes, um, either misunderstood or, or not captured, is, uh, you know, when you, when we do these analyses throughout the country, which we try to analyze, you know, in an actual specific market, are all of these things available within that market or would there be economic leakage? So as it relates to Hamilton County, um, all the hotels are within Hamilton County that could be accessible and all the, uh, popular amusements or amenities, uh, such as these museums and the teams, these are also located within Hamilton County. So if a, uh, one thing to consider is if a youth and amateur sports facility were to be developed in Hamilton County, uh, there would be minimal leakage. Um, again, we, we'd have to go more into our analysis, which would be in phase two, but you know, on the outset, looking at this, is the majority of the popular amenities that people would want to visit while in the Cincinnati market are actually located in Hamilton County. So, uh, people, uh, would play and participate in Hamilton County, in sports in Hamilton County, they would stay in Hamilton County, uh, in their hotels, in their restaurants, et cetera, as well. And also they would recreate and visit and do things within Hamilton County. So, um, you know, preliminarily, it looks like the economics impact could be significant because that, uh, the, all the different activities for people visiting would be captured within, uh, uh, excuse me, Hamilton County. One of the other things that we looked at as well is, um, occupancy rates and average daily rates. So, um, you know, as in terms of, this is from 2022, when we had the full data for that year, uh, average daily rates ranged anywhere between a hundred dollars to a hundred thirty-seven dollars per night, which is, uh, affordable, uh, comparatively, uh, nation to nationwide metrics. Um, also, as you can see here, um, you know, this doesn't necessarily tell the whole story of sports tourism, but it can give an indicator of some opportunities for, um, that, that can be captured by you, youth and amateur sports. Um, as you notice here, that there is a drop both in ADR and in occupancy rates, uh, between November and February. So a lot, if, if, for example, an indoor sports, uh, facility were to be developed, um, you get year, year-round usage, but a lot of these events such as volleyball, basketball, these are, uh, events and tournaments that can be held during the winter or the colder months. And so if you're getting people to, uh, to stay during those months, then that could be a boost, uh, to, um, to occupancy rates within Hamilton County. As I mentioned, we did a, uh, online community survey. These, these are facilities, these, and I should, um, emphasize that these aren't necessarily every single sports facility that's available in, uh, Hamilton County. Um, these are facilities that were frequently mentioned by stakeholders, uh, when we spoke to them and also local sports user groups and conducting interviews with them as the, the sports facilities that were frequently used for local practices, for games, and in some cases, uh, some smaller, uh, sports tournaments. Um, as you can see here, generally speaking, um, a lot of the facilities rated very well in terms of overall satisfaction by participants and users. Uh, the highest one that was rated was, uh, the Family Tennis Center. Uh, and we did speak, uh, or we understand that tennis has, has, uh, been very sustainable and successful in Cincinnati, and I think that's, that's very reflective of what you're seeing there. Um, you do notice here that there are some facilities that, uh, did receive lower scores and that typically is related to, um, you know, frequent comments with that is that the facilities might be outdated or that they lack the sufficient inventory that they need for their programs or even for, uh, hosting events. Again, this just kind of highlights, again, not, not a full comprehensive list of every single facility, but these are the facilities that were mentioned most, as frequently used by local sports groups, um, and also by stakeholders. As you can see, uh, from a multi-use court standpoint, um, there's nothing like, uh, Spooky Knuck Champion Mill, which has, uh, well over 10, uh, multi-use courts, uh, which is key for sports tourism activity. There are, uh, some, uh, fields here that have more than 10 fields. So for example, Clear Creek Park, uh, can boost, uh, your markets up to 23 fields. However, they're not all the same size, uh, typically with, uh, sports tourism facilities, uh, event organizers want to see at minimum eight full-sized, uh, regulation rectangular fields. Uh, the other thing to keep in mind too is although that facility, uh, markets 23 fields, it, the actual amount varies depending on the number of parking that's required at that, uh, at that facility. So, um, in, in reviewing all these facilities, um, there are very few that are actually marketed or treated as sports tourism facilities. And that's the, that was our assumption and that, but that was confirmed in our conversations with stakeholders, uh, in our conversation with local groups. And more importantly, that was the perception that we received when speaking to regional and national event organizers that have, uh, when we approached them about potentially hosting events within Hamilton County. We looked at, as I mentioned earlier, we looked at the current facilities within the Cincinnati market, uh, outside of Hamilton County, but within the Cincinnati MSA, uh, that could be potential competitors, uh, to, uh, any new sports facility development within, within Hamilton County. The real, um, the real facilities that would maybe be the, the most competitive in this sense would be Spooky Knuck Champion Mill, uh, which is the indoor facility, which was recently built and actually still being finalized with, with a few amenities. Voice of America Athletic Complex, uh, and Warren County Sports Park, both of which are, uh, to the north and northeast of, uh, Hamilton County. Uh, actually the same with, with, uh, Spooky Knuck Champion Mill as well. I'll talk a little bit about, more about Spooky Knuck Champion Mill here. As you notice, um, it is a significant, it was a significant, uh, development. Um, it, although, um, there was discussion about it being a private-public partnership, in reality, it really was, um, publicly financed through, uh, various mechanisms. Um, I'll get to that a little bit later, but as you can see just here, the layout, um, there are 14 hardwood basketball courts. Um, there could be more, uh, based on their layout, but, uh, the 14 hardwood basketball courts is what event organizers will, would really use. Um, there are 14 sport court basketball courts, they're mostly just used for volleyball, which is what, why you see on the next line there, combined courts are convertible to 46 volleyball courts. Sport courts are fine for volleyball tournaments, uh, but the, but for basketball events that are going to draw regional and national attention, uh, they need to be hardwood. Again, I mentioned here, uh, Voice of America Park in Westchester Township, um, they do have 25 rectangular fields, it's a very big facility. Uh, one of the feedback, some feedback that we got from event organizers that have held events ever before in the past, is that it is, does feel far from Cincinnati proper and from, from Hamilton County. So that's one thing to keep in mind, uh, with our recommendations in terms of potential opportunities within Hamilton County. And the same goes for Warren County Sports Park as well, where they have six baseball softball diamonds, uh, 14 multipurpose fields. In our scan of these facilities, um, there were no, there was no baseball softball complex that had more than six fields. So that's something that, uh, we talk about a little bit later in our potential recommendations and we, uh, justify that by the, uh, feedback that we got from, um, event organizers. So I'll jump here quickly to, um, outside of the, the Cincinnati market, the most frequently used facilities that were mentioned by, uh, local groups and also by, uh, event organizers. And so, um, I know that the one that has been, that was frequently mentioned was the Grand Sports Park Campus, uh, Grand Park Sports Campus, excuse me, just out, outside of Indianapolis. That one was frequently mentioned due to the number of outdoor fields, both for rectangular fields, for baseball and softball fields, and also for its indoor, uh, sports center, which is actually, uh, operated and owned by the Indiana Pacers. Um, but as you can see here, you know, within this three to four hour drive time range, there really isn't a lot of, you know, high level, um, you know, premier facilities outside of Grand Park Sports Campus, which could also present a potential opportunity for Hamilton County to capitalize on that as well. Um, just quickly looking at Grand Park Sports Campus, as you can see, it's just a mega-complex, 31 multipurpose, uh, rectangular fields, uh, over 20 baseball softball fields, um, and they also have an indoor, uh, sports center, uh, which is owned and operated by, by the Pacers, by the Pacers. Um, the one key thing to consider here is that, uh, despite its success from an economic impact standpoint, um, you know, there are many people that say that it was overbuilt, uh, for its market in many ways. Um, as you can see here in the additional notes, and this is all found in the, in the full report, which would be presented later, uh, the city of Westfield actually tried to sell the park for about 200 million. It appraised for, uh, less than, much less than that. And so the city of Westfield is actually in a very bi-, uh, very big bind of what to do with the complex, because it was unsustainable for them from an operation standpoint. Um, however, uh, just recently, this was announced maybe two months ago, the city of Westfield recently entered into a 40-year operating agreement with Grand Park Sports Entertainment, a consortium of local firms and sports organizations. Um, and they're going to pay the city of Westfield 300 million over a 40-year term, but part of that, uh, this consortium will develop ancillary development throughout the complex, including, uh, residential office and everything. So you can look at it as maybe a lifeline, uh, but that's not very common in, in other communities. So, um, this isn't necessarily the best example of, uh, a successful develop because of kind of the different hoops that had to be jumped through to get to this point. Uh, as you can see, this is a site map and, uh, the development, it's not showing here, but I'm going to move my cursor around, it'll be kind of just surrounding this facility. Um, and then it'll, I mean, as you can see, it's a 40-year agreement, so it's not going to all happen at once, it's going to be, uh, over several decades for that development to really, uh, come to fruition. I'll skip this, it's just kind of, again, just shows, um, you know, the ideal number of, oh, excuse me, this is for, uh, the event organizers that we spoke with, both local, regional and national. As you can see here, I'll focus just on the indoor sports center for now. This, this taught us by surprise a little bit, our initial, uh, thought was, you know, because of the proximity of Spooky Knuck Champion Mill to Hamilton County, that maybe there wouldn't be a lot of, uh, interest in an additional, uh, indoor sports center. But, um, as you can see here, um, this is just from the few that we were able to contact and, and get a hold of, there's actually demand for up to 24 or more, uh, annual events at a new facility. These would not be a transfer from Spooky Knuck, but these would be additional, uh, sports tourism events from an indoor sports perspective within Hamilton County. And as you can see here as well, the minimum, uh, number of course that they would need, uh, would be for, excuse me, eight courts, um, which is consistent with, uh, sports tourism facilities, um, nationwide. Uh, and one of, one of the key things here that they had mentioned in regards to Spooky Knuck Champion Mill, and so I took a, a personal trip or, uh, while I was in Cincinnati and Hamilton County for our kickoff meeting, I drove over to Spooky Knuck to just check out the facility for myself. And one of the things that I noticed was that, um, it's not clear if this will be the, the methodology or the philosophy moving forward, but a lot of the events that they were starting to promote, a lot of the tournaments that they're being, were actually in-house. So rather than renting out the facility to, uh, regional and national event organizers, uh, they're actually looking to the run their own programs and invite teams from out, out of their market. And so as a result of that, uh, a lot of these groups that we spoke with, they weren't sure, uh, if they would even have access to Spooky Knuck in the future anymore. Uh, but regardless of that, there was a lot of interest from their standpoint of actually hosting events within Hamilton County. From a rectangular field standpoint, as you can see, this also was a little surprising for us as well, given the fact that, that there's, uh, Warren County Sports Park and, um, Voice of America Park as well, is that, uh, soccer and lacrosse, there was a lot of demand, uh, up to 32 annual events, uh, for rectangular fields, uh, for a turn, to host tournaments within Hamilton County. Uh, again, for the majority of these, uh, with the exception of USA Lacrosse, uh, which at the national level, they, um, they're not, if they're not necessarily hosting events themselves, they're sanctioning events, so that's why there's, their number of ideal, ideal fields was less, but the majority of these were at least, uh, a minimum of eight rectangular fields in order for them to host, uh, the, these events. And then from a ball damage standpoint, this is the one that actually made the most sense, given that, um, within Hamilton County and also the Cincinnati market, there really is no facility, uh, greater than six, uh, uh, ball fields, uh, one, one complex. And so these event organizers said they could host up to 64, uh, or more, uh, annual, uh, tournaments for both baseball and softball, uh, with the majority wanting a minimum of, uh, two fourplex facility, so eight total fields. And the majority of them would like to see a, these hybrid complexes where they're adaptable for any type of youth baseball group, uh, or event, or also, uh, any type of, uh, softball event, whether it be youth or adult as well. So this is the facility, this is the, where we saw the most demand for was for, um, baseball and, uh, softball, uh, fields. So given all the research that we did, I know I'm just kind of flying through this, but it's, um, well over a hundred pages now, our, our actual report, uh, just for phase one. Um, we identified that, as I mentioned, kind of briefly intimated, the strengths for Hamilton County is that they have strong hotel, restaurant, family attraction inventory. Uh, there is success, uh, with sports tourism events with the Cincinnati Open, with other events that have been held within Hamilton County, and it is established as a premier market for major professional collegiate sports. Um, you have Xavier Basketball, Cincinnati Basketball, now you have Cincinnati as part of the Big 12, um, and then you have the Reds, uh, SC Cincinnati and also the Bengals as well. Uh, the weaknesses, really the only weakness that we found, uh, for Hamilton County was that there is no true sports tourism facility within the county. Uh, and given all these restraints and opportunities, the fact that you can draw from, uh, you know, very large population base, uh, untapped market potential in, in other sports, um, and the, more importantly, the demand for sports tourism facilities in Hamilton County. Um, you know, if the lack of sports tourism facilities is the only weakness, there is an opportunity where the development of sports tourism facilities within the county really could catapult, uh, Hamilton County as a sports tourism destination for youth and amateur sports. So with that, we, um, based on the, the research that we did and the demand, um, from our interview process, we identified from a, a ranking in terms of, um, solely based on the projected annual events, uh, the first ranking that we gave was to baseball softball fields of at least eight baseball and eight softball diamonds, which could, uh, attract at least 64 annual events on, and, uh, on an annual basis, followed by, uh, outdoor rectangular fields of up to 16 fields, um, an indoor court facility. And if there was consideration to really, you know, invest heavily in sports tourism, uh, we felt that there could be demand for aquatics and also an indoor ice facility. Um, I know that, uh, in the case of the Queen City Sports Plex, there, there, there have been a lot of investment and changes there, but in, in speaking with them, they were also very supportive of seeing additional. supportive of seeing additional ice, ice sheets in the community as well. Again, just wanted to quickly touch back on Spooking up Champion Mill. This kind of just shows from that over a hundred-five million dollars that was used to finance the facility. As you can see here, it was really just, the majority was public financing. And so that's one of the considerations that Hamilton County would need to consider is if they were to look at, you know, potential, either one facility or multiple facilities, is the right approach to make sure that this, the financing for that would be appropriate, given what the appetite for Hamilton County would be. And one of the things that we had to mention in our initial interim presentation is the consideration to potentially partner with municipalities and phase out these, these recommendations. So, you know, whether Hamilton County wants to, you know, I'm not necessarily saying this is going to happen with Blue Ash or Forest Park or any, any municipality within the county, saying, let's partner with you specifically for baseball and softball, and let's partner with another municipality for an indoor sports complex and do that out over phases so that it's multi-jurisdictional, and also as a way for the county and municipalities to work together to benefit the whole community, benefit the whole county for both communities, but ultimately, which was the genesis of this project for, you know, to generate economic impact within the county. Again, this is Grand Park Sports Campus, which I already kind of mentioned, the, the very difficult situation that the city was in, eighty million in debt, but ultimately they got a lifeline with this consortium of various group leaders within the Indianapolis market. So in terms of our phase two, once we get direction from the county on how to proceed, we would be developing a custom financial pro forma to project the annual operations, either of one facility or multiple facilities, and then also develop what the economic and fiscal impacts would be from the development of one facility or multiple facilities. So that's what we have so far, and I will open up to questions from the commissioners or anyone else.
Thank you, thank you for this thorough presentation that you have presented. I want to make one correction that I said, youth tourism, youth amateur tourism is thirty-nine point seven billion dollars. So I was in the millions, we're in the billions, thirty-nine point seven billion dollars. Mr. Ludo, did you have anything to add or Holly before we open it up?
No, just again, just to reiterate that it, this is phase one of what is designed to be a two-phase study. The first phase was more to assess the opportunity community-wide. The second phase, if the board decides to go that route, would be to look more at a, given the recommendations of Victus, to look more specifically at an operating model and a financial model for any of the prioritized options that Walter spoke of. So, no, nothing further to state at this point, other than just open up to the board, see if there's any questions.
And I also want to acknowledge our Hamilton County Health Commissioner, who was here earlier and was a part of this study as well. Was there any, I would ask you on another point, I had some people that I think participated in the study in terms of, I think, roller skating, or was there any other sporting activities that we might have missed or that surprised you that came up in this, in your research?
Sorry, trying to unmute there. We did speak with, we did speak on the action sports level with the Cincinnati Skate Project. We spoke with, I think with Roller Derby as well. And typically from the, from other, let me, let me go back. So it's from the Cincinnati Skate Project, we have been seeing some trends nationally for some sports tourism related to action sports, such as skateboarding, bikes, things like that. And that could be a consideration for the future, but in our research, we didn't identify something significant for, in terms of an economic impact as what you'd see with the other recommendations that we made. That could change in the future, but just in our assessment right now, it wasn't something that was very significant. And the same thing goes with, you know, on the roller derby side, typically with those types of events, it's more localized, where it's just weekly events during a specific season. But again, it's not something that, that is significant on a regional or even national level. One thing too, that I'll mention in passing, just because sometimes it does get asked by communities that we work with is the concept of esports. You know, esports was definitely growing, you know, the early, maybe the early half of the two thousand teens, where it was kind of seen as the next big thing. But we've seen, at least in the nationally United States, it's kind of plateaued to a sense where you're not seeing as much investment specifically in esports-type facilities. If anything, you know, with indoor sports centers or certain recreation centers, you're seeing these spaces built multipurpose that could be capable in the future of hosting esports activity, but you're not seeing anything specific where they're trying to host or trying to build esports arenas, so to speak, where you're seeing maybe in Asia or other areas where, you know, that, those markets have matured and there's just continues to be explosive growth. So the, the facilities that we mentioned here are reflective of the, the ones that we felt potentially could benefit the most or generate the most economic impact within Hamilton County.
Gotcha. And one of the things I wanted to say in terms of my, my thoughts was not necessarily the county building anything or funding it, but a partnership, because there's a lot of people trying to do these, and how do we do it instead of, you know, how do we maybe incentivize? I know that would be next phase, but I wanted to put that out there, that I wasn't looking at it. We would develop it own, but we would maybe incentivize, and because of that, people who are looking at properties outside of Hamilton County and taking our money, and how do we try to get the money inside of Hamilton County?
Right, that's right, Commissioner. Right, and then just, and just for clarity, and for, to disclaim too, when we had our conversation with stakeholders and event, event organizers, we were very clear that the, that Hamilton County was not themselves looking to finance or fund or develop the facilities themselves, but they were the ones that commissioned the study for us to look at, you know, this, this study to benefit the whole county, but that ultimately, if anything would be developed, it would probably be through some type of partnership, either with municipalities or, or other means. But just to get a general sense from within the county is what our purpose was with the study.
Gotcha. And then I got a call from one of the Cincinnati Public School Board members, Mary Weinberg, who won the Olympics, she's a track runner, and she said she had went to an event in, I think it was Louisville, and it's, and it's an urban league facility, but it has track, and she was saying that there was, might be a need because of, I don't know all the ins and outs, but UC not doing the indoor track. Did we look at that as a possibility? I know she had, I think I sent her to you, but she had brought that up about the possibility. Did we look at track?
We did briefly, but again, just based on the, the feedback that we've gotten from several groups, it wasn't something that was immediately identified. So I think you're referring to, I think it's called the Louisville Sports and Learning Center. So there is starting to be more development for indoor sports, indoor tracks, excuse me, facilities within the Midwest. So you have that facility in Kentucky, then you also have the state fairgrounds in Indianapolis. They've actually converted one of their pavilions to be an indoor track and field center, and they're going to be hosting a lot of USA track and field events that are sanctioned events because they've just entered into a long-term partnership. And so that's for indoor track facilities, those are the type of facilities that you don't necessarily want bundled up within a short drive time of each other, because there's, there's simply not enough regional and national events to make it sustainable where you, as opposed to basketball, volleyball, soccer, and those types of things where you have thousands upon thousands of, and millions, excuse me, participants where there's just a greater impact there.
Right. And then these, do we look at these to help us be able to, like the EYBLs, the big tournaments that come in, the Nike, those kind of things that usually bring in, but then also be able to be used for dance and cheerleading as well as that?
Right. So, yeah, so typically, like I said, we, we're, you know, in our, sort of our research process, we usually reach out to fifty or more event organizers. We don't necessarily get a response from everyone, so that's why, you know, we're able to show all the ones that responded, we're able to get feedback, immediate feedback from, due to the timeline, the deadlines that we have with, with each study. However, it's safe to say that, you know, once these, these facilities are developed, that other people are going to come knocking to the door because word spreads fast among event organizers. And the important thing is too, is, you know, when we make recommendations to communities about these, you know, specifically as an indoor sports facilities, to make it as multi-use as possible, so that you're not just depending on basketball and volleyball, but you're, you're also able to host events for footsaw, for example, you're able to host wrestling events, you know, from the national organizing bodies, like for USA Judo, for karate, for USA Ping Pong, table tennis, et cetera. So there are just so many different events that use indoor spaces that, that we necessarily weren't able to capture within the study, but would be open to using these types of facilities as well.
Okay. Yeah, I wanted to figure that part out as much as possible, because we've got so many sports. Did you find anything helping with, you mentioned UC in the Big Twelve, et cetera, but when you go to these competitions, one of our biggest things is that I want more people getting scholarships, you know, and these tournaments bring in college coaches and those kind of things. Did you see anything with that that would help us, more college coaches would be coming to Hamilton County and looking at our kids for, you know, you got the star players and then you've also got great players and all of them.
Right.
Some school out there for them.
Yes, there are a lot of these event organizers, not only do they host these regional, national tournaments for just major events, but they also like to host college showcases, and those are small, they're smaller events from an economic impact standpoint, because you're not getting full teams, sometimes you're just getting individual players. And for example, flag football too, or just tackle football, you usually have like passing camps or receiver camps that are used by high school event promoters to bring these players to one certain location so that college coaches can go recruit. So those would all be on the table as well. But the ones that, the ones that would, again, generate the biggest impact are the ones that are bringing in multiple hundreds of teams for events.
That's understandable, but I do put some dollar value if they get a forty thousand dollar scholarship or something, a kid around here, so.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Okay, well, I'll open it up, Vice President Drew House.
Thank you, thank you for the presentation. Appreciate the time and energy you put on this, and to those in the room, thank you for participating in this. I have, so this is, I, I don't know really how to approach this issue really, and this report in particular, because we've done a study for something that we don't intend to build or run ourselves, from what I'm understanding, and I think that's right. So it, for me, this is, it's, my questions are related because of that to what the impacts are to things we do own and operate as a county, or our partners own and operate. So I just want to say that I, I know a lot about sports locally, and I mean locally, like, right, with teams playing in the backyard and, and my kids participating and coaching and all that stuff. And so my, my idea of athletics in Hamilton County is very localized. It's, it's about getting kids in, onto these teams, it's about giving them options for something positive to do. So that's how I think about athletics, so it's very localized. And I think there's a huge benefit to having kids play sports of all kinds, no matter what their interests are, whatever their ability is. I, I'm a big fan of kids participating in athletics. The, what we have in front of us makes me wonder a little bit about impacts. So if we have, and I went through the inventory list, and I know that you are aware that I, I looked at that list and thought, yeah, we don't have everybody on here, because I, I was the president of the Cincinnati Recreation Commission for a while, and so you've captured some of the Cincinnati Recreation facilities, but only three of many, many, many. And so I just didn't, I didn't quite understand what the inventory was meant to capture. And I think maybe the answer to that, you tell me if I'm wrong, is that some of the facilities, even though CRC has facilities with multiple ball fields on some of their complexes, I think of, especially along the river, there are a number of complexes down there. Is this inventory meant to capture the larger facilities that would be available to bringing in people from other parts of the country? Or I just, I'm not sure what this is intended to do, because if it is intended to really capture the inventory, there are many, many, many facilities that aren't captured in this inventory. So help me understand what the intention was for the inventory outline that we've got in front of us.
Sure, we, we give more of a explanation in the full report. So again, it's, it's hard to really articulate everything with, within the interim report, which is a few slides, of course, but really, again, this goes back to the, the purpose of, of why we were hired by the county, which was to identify opportunities for sports tourism impact in Hamilton County. So as part of that initial scan that we do is we look at facilities that are within Hamilton County right now, and do any of them host sports tourism activity? So rather than us necessarily going through each facility ourselves, we, we speak with stakeholders, and this is part of our stakeholder engagement process. We also speak with local sports groups. We also conducted an online survey with Hamilton County residents, and then also we spoke with regional, national event organizers to kind of get a picture of what are the facilities that are used the most for either local and local practices, local games, and also what facilities, if any, are used for sports tourism. So based on the, the feedback that we had gotten from all those inputs, that, that's why we, we selected these facilities. Now, like, as I mentioned, we, we put a disclaimer in our full report that this isn't a, an exhaustive list of every single facility, but it, it also kind of paints the picture of the perception of the groups that we spoke with, of what they feel that's available to them, from, again, number of fields, number of courts, et cetera, but also too, for, for the quality of some of them. So as I, I'll swing back here to, let's see if I'm still sharing my screen. Okay. Let me go back to that slide here. I don't know, can you guys see that? Okay, perfect. So I, I mentioned Clear Creek Park. It has, so on the outset, it looks, okay, they have twenty-three fields, but not all of them are the same size. Also, the number of fields actually available depend on the parking space, which parking is a huge component of any sports tourism development. And in speaking with regional and national event organizers, and their scan and understanding of Hamilton County, to them, there really is no facility within Hamilton County that is, could be marketed or labeled as a sports tourism facility. So it's, it's not just the number of fields, but it, or, you know, the number of courts, but it's also the quality of those, the conditions of those fields and courts, other amenities such as concessions, bleacher seating, proximity to hotels, et cetera. So although, like I said, it's not an exhaustive, this is, this shows that there is a lot of sports facilities within Hamilton County, but really none of them, based on the, the feedback that we gathered, are capable of hosting sports tourism. So it goes back to, again, the reason why we were hired. If we were hired specifically just to scan and to understand what's currently available to benefit local usage, then this would look a little bit different, just because, you know, it would be more extensive on seeing every single field and court that's available to Hamilton County residents. But this is more of a scan to understand what's frequently used and what, what could potentially, or what has hosted sports tourism events in the past.
Okay. Yeah, that's helpful, because as you say, this is not exhaustive, but when you look at sports, not by way of can kids access opportunities, but rather a tourism lens, it's a completely different list. So that's, that's why this looks like it does.
Right, and Commissioner, just to kind of add to that point as well, so obviously, in many communities that we do as well, high school fields are sometimes available to groups, indoor, like high school gyms as well, and in some studies will actually list those specifically, because some of those facilities sometimes are available for some sports tourism activity, or they might be the only fields or courts available to communities for local practices as well. So we understand that, obviously, in, in Hamilton County, there, you know, we didn't even list all the schools or any of the schools, but there's a lot of, you know, inventory, so to speak, but the lack of access is also something that we consider as well, and that's why we rely heavily on the, the interview process that we, that we conduct, which, as, as you can see, you'll see in the report, we held over, well over ten stakeholder interviews, and then dozens of local and regional and national events organizers as well.
So just a couple other things then. So I, I noted that Rose Lawn isn't on here, I don't, I'm, I'm just surprised. I don't, I'm I'm just surprised by it. Rose Lawn is meant to be a regional baseball facility. Again, it's owned by the Cincinnati Recreation Commission. I don't remember how many fields are out there. I'm just surprised it it's not on here. Does that ring a bell at all for you?
It doesn't. And again, this goes back to, again, the the feedback that we received from the groups that we spoke with. So it it wasn't mentioned that once. So the reasons why, I I don't know, it, I don't know the reason why, it could be a variety of factors, but from the all the groups that we spoke with, these are the facilities that were specifically mentioned as frequently used by those groups.
Okay, and the reason I ask about Rose Lawn or, you know, some of these other facilities that are on here, I wonder if if we talk about creating a space that is large, that has the the multi, multiple fields, whether it be baseball or soccer or whatever it is, I I have a curiosity about whether or not something that already exists would lend itself to expansion or whether or not the idea is to create something entirely new. And I didn't know if that was something that was on the radar or if the focus was on something new as opposed to, you know, expanding something that we already have.
That that's a great point, and that's that's something that we would, we would lean on the direction from the county. So if if the county feels that, okay, we would want to partner with the municipality or, you know, whether that Cincinnati Blue Ash Forest Park, for example, we already have, you know, an existing infrastructure here. Why don't we expand it and and make improvements? And in many cases, that could be, the development cost could be significantly less than building something from scratch, considering that you then wouldn't have to deal with acquisition costs and development, et cetera. So that absolutely is on the table, but that's where we would defer to the direction from the county. So for example, again, just hypothetically speaking, if you were to say, we want you to look at Clear Creek Park and, you know, what would need to happen there to make it a true sports tourism level? And we could dive into that specifically, so that there could be potential cost savings there. Again, just speaking very preliminary now, but absolutely, that we're not necessarily saying that it needs to be a brand new facility. However, what should be noted, though, you know, it's it's different for outdoor facilities as opposed to indoor. So we've we've come across facilities where like it's a, you know, might be an abandoned school or a warehouse that could potentially be repurposed as an indoor sports center, could potentially have the the necessary or the minimum requirements for, you know, for indoor courts, et cetera. But sometimes, and once you start to engage engineers and architects, they might say, you know what? It's going to cost more to repurpose this facility than just to build a new facility from scratch. So every every case is different. But again, our, from our vantage point, we're we're here to offer recommendations on on the best approach and which ones to consider. But in this case, we would lean on the county's direction on to look, if you wanted to look at specific facility as a potential redevelopment option.
Okay, just, yeah, and and the other one that strikes me on the list, I don't mean to focus on the list so much, but the Duke Energy Convention Center. I've been down there when volleyball tournaments are taking place, and I'd see that that's not being captured here. And we're in the middle of a renovation down there. And so I I just wonder if there's something there also that we should just think about as we think about that renovation and the use of that facility that is very near some of the other assets that you mentioned, like hotels and and restaurants and bars and that kind of stuff.
Yeah, and with with, in regards to Duke Energy, so we listed here actual permanent multi-use courts. So because Duke Energy doesn't necessarily have them there the full year, we didn't list that. And also, in in speaking with Duke Duke Energy Convention Center, that was part of our stakeholder interview process. Our understanding in our conversations with them is that they're actually looking to focus more on your traditional expos and non-sports events. So they were very supportive of another indoor sports center that would be able to transfer any, you know, volleyball type events to to a different facility so that they can focus more on expos and 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 other things that to them are more, generate more revenue for for their their mission or what they're looking to do.
Gotcha. Thank you. Then I just have a couple other things. So that leads to my, these are then questions. If if we have a model here where the county is participating by way of incentives and not building or running the facility, then I have just a couple of questions related to that. One would be any impacts to current facilities that are already in the the area? And I I would worry just a little bit about that. I'm not sure if you studied it. And I think of some of these larger places that have especially multiple ball fields and, you know, not sucking away from what they're doing with an additional facility. I I don't know if you studied that or not.
We have. Let me, let me go back real quick to our methodology here. So we do have, that is part of our scope, is looking at this, as you can see here, partnerships analysis. So there are communities where there is concern of, you know, if this new facility were to develop, would there be a cannibal cannibalization of, you know, local usage for practices, et cetera? And what the impact could be from a tourism impact standpoint as well. So it is something that we would look at in this study as well. What I can say is, you know, typically in these situations, that's really where you're looking at multi-jurisdictional partnerships. So in this case, because this is being conducted at the county level, you know, we're going to explore and kind of analyze, you know, if a certain facility were to be built, you know, in Forest Park, for example, what the impact would be on other facilities and how the county or those municipalities can work together to make sure that, you know, the biggest impact, I guess, would just be more from local usage, not from a an economic impact standpoint, simply because none of the other facilities, based on our research, show that they're actually hosting significant sports tourism impact. So from that standpoint, if a new facility were built, all the sports impact tournament impact would be happening in that facility, which wouldn't necessarily negatively affect the other sports facilities. The the make, the biggest impact would be from a local usage standpoint. So, you know, for practices, games like that, but that's something that we would look at in more in depth in the partnerships analysis.
Okay, thank you. When you think about sports in general and the popularity, I guess, of some sports versus others as we go, and I don't want to make generalizations that aren't necessarily borne out in research, but I think we know that soccer is something that's becoming more popular. Other sports are becoming less popular, and they and they ebb and flow as we go. And so is any of that considered here by way of what would be a smart investment as you look five to 10 years out by way of what sports are being played now versus what might be being played in 10 years?
Yeah, no, that's a great point, and and I guess this goes back to my comment of for any facility to make it as multi-use as possible. And what I mean by that is you're not necessarily pigeonholing yourself into, you know, if we were to say, for example, to Hamilton County, you need to build an esports facility immediately, and you build it, and what happens in 10 years if esports goes out the window? You have a facility that you can no longer use for indoor sports, right? But if you build a facility for an indoor sports center that can host basketball and volleyball, but also has sufficient space that you're able to, you know, attract wrestling events and judo events, karate, cornhole, any type of multi-use fence, that's going to be a sustainable facility in the in the long term. As we look, as we've looked at trends for sports participation, every community is a little bit different. You'll have some communities where soccer is number one. You'll have other communities where lacrosse or rugby are number one and soccer is behind. And so these recommendations are based on what we're seeing that makes the most sense for a community. As you can see with our recommendations here, let me jump here. And we talked a little bit more in depth in the full report. But as you can see here, this, usually the the event demand interviews gives you a good indication of what's happening in the future, because consider that the majority of these events are for groups that are under 18. So they're going to probably still play when they're eight, when they're 10, when they're 11 and 12. And most likely, these these have younger siblings that are coming up the ranks as well. The one thing to keep in mind, too, baseball softball is kind of different, because there's, for ball diamonds, that's what the usage is going to be. We are seeing some growth in kickball events. That's something that to look out for in the future, and they usually typically use softball fields from the rectangular fields. Not only soccer, lacrosse, rugby is starting to grow nationwide as well. One that's that really, I think we, I mentioned this with Holly and with Jeff in our interim presentation with Pat as well a few weeks ago or a few months ago, is that to be on the lookout for flag football. So as many know, kind of the dangers of of tackle football, there's been a resurgence in the interest in flag football, both on the boys and more importantly, on the girls level. And you're starting to see a lot of youth and amateur sports activity for flag football. And so as we see that grow over the next five to 10 years, that potentially could overtake, again, I'm just seeking hypothetically here, but that potentially could be at the same level as soccer or other rectangular field sports. So maybe if you were to develop a sock, a rectangular field complex in Hamilton County, and maybe you see a drop in lacrosse or even maybe some drop in soccer, you would probably see an uptick in flag football. And that would be significant, because there's a lot of tournament activity happening now nationally. In fact, my, me, myself, in January, I was actually in Tampa Bay for a national flag football tournament. And that that drew thousands of participants from the whole world. And so, and that's for both boys and girls. So there, there are a lot of sports that are growing that would utilize the same types of fields that we're recommending in our report.
Great, that's helpful. Thank you. And one last thing. So I feel like it's, it's, it feels so funny to me that we're talking about a private market, hopefully, partnership here, where we've kind of done the market study for them, you know what I mean? Save them the time and the energy and the money to do the market study, to figure out what the lay of the land is, to decide whether or not it's a smart investment, right? I mean, that that's what the market study would would be all about. And so here's the market study, at least in part, at least the phase one. So let's talk just quickly then about a public sector investment here, because I heard you say there would be maybe potential, and I'm trying to figure out what the role of the county is by way of incentives. You know, what what have you seen in other communities? What would that look like? If the private sector were to say, oh, you've done this study, looks good. We see that there might be a market here for something. We're willing to come in and build it and to operate it. What what have other communities done by way of incentives to create an environment where that might happen?
That's a great question, and the answer is, and I hate to say this, it depends, because every community has different objectives. Sometimes our client is a county, and so they're trying to kind of juggle different interests from various municipalities. Sometimes the client is a state, sometimes the client is a city or a town. And sometimes, if the client is a city, they're the only show in town across 300 miles. So so they are kind of acting as the county, the state, et cetera. There are some communities where their sole focus is, we just want to generate economic impact. We know that the facility from an operating standpoint is going to require a subsidy from public funds. We're going to publicly own it, but we're going to have a private operator operate it who knows how to bring in events, because our only focus is to generate economic impact. And that, they know that, and and that's how they 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 roll with it. There's other communities where they say, well, we really want a hybrid facility that it's going to be, it's going to benefit local usage between Monday and Thursday for local groups, for practices, for leagues. But on Fri- Friday through Sa- Sunday, we want it for gen- for economic impact. And so we're going to create a quasi-operator operator where, you know, there, we're focusing on local usage during the week and then private usage for events on the weekend. But because we live in an affluent community, we can charge market rates, so the facility probably can at least break even. Or if if, you know, a community says, okay, we're going to build a facility, but we want it private operated. We just want this benefit for the local community. The operators say, okay, well, we're going to do everything in-house. And, you know, we're going to charge the rates that we want, and we're going to make sure that it runs in the black, no matter what. So we've seen every situation. It just really depends on what the the client or what the public entity wants to accomplish. If it's, if its sole purpose is to generate economic impact for the community, then, you know, to them, it might be worth it to develop the facility on their own and know that it's going to operate at, you know, at a loss, but the economic impact will be worth that. Sometimes two facilities will say, or communities say, well, we really don't want to publicly finance this. Maybe we can offer the land, but it has to be privately developed. So then what you'll see is a lot of private development around the facility with hotels, with retail, with with office. So kind of what you're seeing here, I'll, let me go back to my slide here. With Hamilton, no, not Hamilton County, excuse me, City of Westfield, sorry, there's a typo there on my end. So this is the the Grand Park Sports Campus with Westfield. So in order for them to make it work, they're going to be paying 300 million over 40-year term, but they're also going to plan a mix of restaurants, hotels. So they're trying to create a public-private partnership after the fact. If you, one of our clients, you you can Google this if if you want. This is the, it's called the Alachua County Sports and Events Center, which is located in Gainesville, Florida. They developed an indoor sports center with an indoor track, but it was part of a master plan that includes residential, includes movie theaters, et cetera. So it's all in the same site, and it was, that was a true private-public partnership, and it's going to be privately operated as well. So what you'll also see too with certain facilities, just naming here like an indoor sports center, is that you'll get private partnerships through large corporations where, like a health system. So for example, in Fort Wayne, the largest health system in Indiana, there is Parkview. And so they're looking at potential to creating their own field house. That would be basically them with the naming rights and then in partnership with the city. So there's different ways to do it, but it just really depends on the objectives of the the municipality and also to what's available in their community in terms of potential private partners as well and their appetite for engaging on an investment like this.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I I want to make sure, so we, because we're getting off track. We did an RFP, I think, and and maybe later, Mr. Ludo could tell us what was the RFP? Because some, there were some things I wanted in the, in this, and they said that didn't include in this particular thing. But we're talking about sports tourism. We're not talking about the, and these people are in the business. But I don't think we're doing their work for them. I'm looking at here, it says Northern Kentucky explores feasibility of amateur sports tourism facility. This is after we had already started. We fund, we get our money off of hotel tax. That's one of the ways we make money. And the, we're looking at a lot of different things. We got big stadiums and arenas and different things. And I said, well, wait a minute, folks who've been in this said, hey, what about this amateur sports complex? That's different than the recreation center. And so this would be a tourism-specific facility. And I said, well, can we get something that, is there anybody out there that's doing this? Because they're building around us and we're losing money. Even when we do the tennis piece, it says Cincinnati Tennis, but it's in Warren County. And we're not making anything. If Northern Kentucky, we're our friends right across the street, right across the river, they are looking at this, because this is the future. So I was just trying to figure out what can we do as we fund, help fund tourism? We get hotel tax. What is it that we, I don't want them going to Warren, Ohio. I I don't get anything from that. So I was trying to figure out, and so we did a study. Now, I didn't tell the administrator how the study is, and we going kind of around in circles, because I got some questions too. I wanted to come back to see what, we got to always look at what facilities we already have, but we don't have anything. We just lost courts in Evendale. They're going to do all ice hockey. What is it that we can do to keep the money in Hamilton County? But our good friends have already started across the river, and they just released their report. And they've got a lot of stuff in their report for why we should do it in Northern Kentucky, which is right across the river, and then we lose out on the hotel money. And they have a, they have a thing. So this is what people are looking at, because it is the future. And I thought we should take a look as we are making a lot of tourism-type decisions and hotel decisions. Now, what you guys were asked to do, I don't know. I didn't know about no two-part series. But I wanted to find out how to, just like Northern Kentucky, Warren County, all these other counties are looking around us, and we don't want to be the donut, where we're in the middle, losing all the money, and they're making all the money. So that's what was the intention of tourism, not, you know, the rec center is $5 or $6 to get a membership. And they're doing a good job, but they're not doing tourism, if you will. So that's why I wanted to have us, we decided to do a study. I I had something else in mind, but we all agreed on a study. So I wanted to just make sure we understood what that, the reason or what we were looking into. Why, it doesn't mean we can't do a facility ourselves. I just figured, I said, it'd be great if we could do something incentivized, because these people are building. They're doing it, but they're doing it outside of Hamilton. Why are they passing us up in Hamilton County? I'm sorry, Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you. Thanks, Walter, for your presentation.
Thank you. Thanks, Walter, for your presentation. A few comments. There are a lot of studies that are going on now. Every day you hear about either the city or some other entity that's going to do a study on sports facilities or arenas. Specifically, are you doing any of those studies locally here, or just our study?
We, we've only been engaged by Hamilton County, so we're not doing any studies in the surrounding community.
Okay. And I heard you saved us a little money too. We had allocated so much, and you didn't need that much. So I, I thank you for that. I mean, who would not, the, actually, the report indicates that people are just really excited about a facility, and I would say, who would not be excited about a new facility or a new building, considering the ones that they are in. For me, I need a little bit more specifics, and I don't know, Walter, if it's going to be in your comprehensive report as it relates to the methodology on the online survey specifically, I would like to know how many, how many surveys? And some data, not specifically about the names of the people, but what, what area, what region, what not only demographics, but black, white, professionals. I don't know if you're going to present that at another date. Same thing with the stakeholder interviews, how many? And where did they come from? That would be helpful for me.
Yes, we
Go ahead.
We're sorry, sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt. Yeah, we, we have that all detailed out in our full report.
Okay. And along with the sports event organizers.
Yes.
So, thank you. I'll be looking forward to seeing that. And of course, if we build it, they will come. And for me, the question is, should we build it? Because we oftentimes say we're going to partner or collaborate with certain entities, and then we end up footing the bill, and I'm, I'm not in support of that at all. My priority right now is to the construction of the convention center, and of course, the hotel. So this is not a priority for me. Youth are a priority for me. If we can, and I think it was mentioned earlier, renovate or redevelop some of the current buildings that we have, I would be fine with that, and expand some of them so we could get more groups and activities coming in. That's where I would go in that direction. And I was just a little surprised as you talked about the ranking of sports. And you put baseball, softball complex. Because I keep hearing about how basketball is a big draw. So I was just a little surprised about that. Is it because of the input you got from the surveys? Or how did you come to that?
It was, it was a combination of the input that we received from our surveys, from our stakeholder interviews, and from our local and regional event organizer interviews. So as I mentioned, it just depends on the community. Every community you have just pent up demand for certain sports or emerging sports. And so, you know, that's the one that we got that was pretty loud and clear, as you can see from our chart here in terms of the need for, based on them, what, what facilities they would like to see that they could generate economic impact within Hamilton County.
Thank you. And I guess lastly, as we look at the SWOT analysis, and the only weakness you saw basically was that we don't have one. And so I, my concern is, as others are looking at studies to do the same thing, I think, and they're moving a little quicker than we are because we haven't decided where we want to go. I think possibly a weakness is, by the time we get there, if we decide we're going to build our partner, another facility or another arena will be built. And I could possibly see that as a weakness. Of the people you talk to, the owners, I forget what you categor- categorize them as.
Commissioner, while, while you look at that, I, I have the, the, we list that as a threat, the regional facility competition. So that is not necessarily a weakness, but it's a threat that when we look at threat, that's an external situation in that, yeah, if a facility or facilities are built surrounding the Cincinnati market or within the Cincinnati market, then that would provide competition, but that's not necessarily a weakness. We classify that as a threat to any potential development.
Okay, thank you. So when you talk to the sports event organizers, not specifically, but did they mention about wanting to do the same thing and the timetable to do that?
They did not. So again, when we, we, when we speak to them specifically, we say, you know, what facilities do you visit? Have you ever visited any facility within the Cincinnati market? We ask them, we also ask them, what are your thoughts on Hamilton County or the Cincinnati market as a sports tourism destination? For those that have held events, you know, at Spooky Nook or other events in the Cincinnati market, they'll, they'll give us their feedback. We like this, we didn't like that. Then we'll ask them specifically about, okay, what if an event, what if a facility were held in Hamilton County itself? And that's where they list off many of the things that we've mentioned here as strengths, that the location is ideal, they want to be close to the river, they want to be close to Cincinnati, they like the fact that families can go to a Reds game after, you know, their events, or a Bengals game, or FC Cincinnati game. They like that there are hotels, you know, along the freeway, et cetera. So all that feedback goes into, and again, it, it's hard to fully, I know this is just a twenty-seven page interim presentation, but all this information and feedback is in the full report. And when, at the end of the report, it's usually anywhere between one hundred and fifty to two hundred pages. And so you'll see detailed how that, that is all spelled out from the feedback that we got.
Thanks. And I, with the amenities that you mentioned, it's clear that we have a lot of them here in Hamilton County. But the landscape is real clear that other entities are looking at doing the same thing. So I understand what you said is a threat, but we definitely, I definitely don't want to step into something and someone else is building it, let them build it, and we can possibly partner with whoever's doing it, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Ludo, one of the things, because I do not like studies, I agree with that, not it, but we, we kind of came upon this. And we were supposed, we were the first out. I think we were at the end of, in the middle of twenty twenty-two, but because we had a staffing issue, and we were kind of behind on, we were behind on getting the RFP out, am I, am I correct? And that's why we're in twenty-four.
Yeah, I, I think we probably would have been close to twenty-four had we gotten it out when we wanted, but we are a little bit delayed because of
But I thought we had an employee, this should have been out in twenty-three, because we, we approved it. And we were supposed to have it, you had it in your report, you'd have it in the second or third quarter of twenty-three. But we did, had we lost the employee.
When we lost Mr. Von Allman to the, to the city. So we did lose some months there, yes.
So I wanted to put that out because I wanted to feel like there were already studies, and then we came with this study. We were the first with a study on the youth sports. But we, you know, we have to go through RFP and those kind of things. We did have some staffing issues, and that put us really behind. That's why it looks like. We'd have been out there before Northern Kentucky. We'd have been out there before even arena, which I think is something a little different, but it took a time to get this group on board. And so I think that's why we're in this predicament. But where do we go from here?
So the, the next phase of this, again, was phase one of this report, which was designed to essentially identify the opportunities and the gaps, if there were any gaps. And I think as Mr. Franco indicated, there is a lack of true sports tourism facilities in the community. So the question is, where do we put the, our next effort in terms of figuring out how to fill that gap? I think the board has had some discussion here today about multiple options. Mr. Franco has walked through multiple options for that. So phase two would move into actually scoping out a, a facility, what a facility operating model would look like. I think the board has talked today about, there may be different ways to do that, either new, a completely new build, or partnering with other efforts that are already going on. I think those are two paths that we should mutually explore. So I think that would be the next phase of this, commissioners, would be looking at again, and from the Victus report, focusing on that top priority of baseball, softball fields, et cetera, scoping out and operating in a financial model for that, and also taking into account what other partnerships might be available in the community. That would be the recommendation that we would give to move into a phase two on this. We would, there may be some contractual amendments that we might have to do to, to include some additional things in the scope. But that's something that would be pretty minimal.
Okay. One of the things I would like us to look at is, who's out there that, there's people out there getting ready to do this? And how do we recruit them to be in our county and not another county? That's basically where I'm at. If, if they're out there and they're getting ready to try to do something like this, I'd like that to be in the, I don't want us just to be study, study, study. I mean, there's competition, there's a, someone wanting, just down between us and Warren County, it's somebody between us and Northern Kentucky. I'm interested in how do we, you know, not going from scratch, but if these people are out there, I'm more interested in more of a a recruitment tool, just like, you know, we're trying to, we, we, you know, recruiting. We're putting money in a lot of other studies. We've got a bunch of studies coming on other stuff, but how do we recruit them to be in, on our side of the county, in our county? Because a lot of people, we get, we get left with these huge, we got the huge projects that are heavy lifts. We've got two major stadiums, heavy lifts, but just like now, the stadium is down. We're not making any money, and it's costing us money. So how do we make sure that we don't just have these heavy lifts? Is it something out there? And I want, that's what I would want them to at least let us know. Is there something out there that's getting maybe in another county that would be great for our county? That they know that we're interested.
And Commissioner, if I can just jump in real quick, and if, whoever's showing the screen, if you can share the screen again. That's what we show in this report. Two separate examples here, as, as I mentioned with Spooky Nook Champion Mill, I don't know if you can see the screen that I'm sharing again. Okay. So the reason why you're getting a lot of developers or potential operators to jump at certain communities, because those communities are basically saying, we're going to finance the whole thing for you, and you can operate it. And so it's very rare to see operators or partners say, we'll take everything off your hands, and we'll build it for your, the benefit of your community. There's always a, an interest on their end of how they're going to be able to basically partner on this without, with the, with the risk coming all at the public expense from counties or cities. And so as you, so we, we called that out here, so we, we called that out here for Spooky Nook Champion Mill. As you can see, over a hundred and five million was issued in bonds. So public funds.
I got that part. Hold on, you don't have to go back to that. We got somebody sitting in here, ready to take the risk. So maybe when we get done with this, I'm just saying, as we go to the next phase, is there somebody out, we already know about the Spooky Nook, that, that is not, that business model is not the best business model. We all agree, we understand. But you know, there's people out there, and I just want to know if they're out there, that's all. And whatever the next report is, it won't be in this report, but I mean, there's people out there, ready to try to do something. They're sitting in this room right now. I know you're on Zoom. But there may be others. So I'm just want to make sure that's included in the next thing. Is there a, a, is there an opportunity? It may not be. If it's not, then it's not. You know, it's not, I just want to make sure all of that is presented to us in the next, whatever the next phase is. I don't know what the next phase is. Whatever it is, to me, that's where I want to get to. And if there isn't, then we know, okay, it isn't, and we walk away, no big deal. But if it is, I want to make sure that, I don't want this donut built around us. And we not getting any money. We don't make any money. If you stay in a hotel out in Warren County, we make nothing. If you go out and eat in Warren County, I don't get a dime. If you across the river, and you have a great tournament over there, we don't get a dime unless it bleeds over here, and it very seldom does. It usually goes the opposite direction. So, and we're, we're making some, you know, we're looking at tourism, yes. We've got a convention center, that's one thing, but Convention Center is going to only handle this kind of business. Is there anything we're leaving on table? Like I said, we got these big stadiums right now. We paying for it. The taxpayers are right this moment, and there's nothing in it but a bill. So this is every weekend, there's something. So we don't want to do anything. If it's something small, of course, we're not trying to hurt those entities that we have. But is there opportunity? And that's what I'm wanting to know. If it ain't, then we walk away, no big deal. But if it is, we can't jump up ten years from now and say, man, they build all around us, man, amateur sports is what, where it's at. And we're on the outside of it. And then here comes somebody with some expensive, the other thing is, we can't do everything downtown Cincinnati. We got forty-nine municipalities. So we cannot, everything can't be all the big bucks downtown. We got to get out in these other areas, Blue Ash, some other areas, Anderson, they deserve Forest Park. You know, we've got to get out in these other areas. We can't go and put all billions of dollars just downtown. We got to these other areas, got things going, and they would like to have a piece of the pie. That's not just for you, but but I guess that's what we'll find out later. Jeff, you'll let us know what, what is potential next steps, and then we'll kind of go from there. But I, I do agree, Mr. Dumas was saying in this report, I don't know if those, some of those, those are some good questions, and they need to be answered. I don't know if it's in this bigger document, but if it's not, it needs to be included as well. And Vice President Dreehaus asked about, we invest in in future, we're not investing in something that's going to be, be unpopular in ten days.
If we're going to move forward with the next phase, I mean, I'm interested in the business case. I want to see the business case. If, if this is a good investment, and there's a way to incentivize this, I, I would like to know that. I, I am not familiar with how this works in other parts of the country. So I, I don't want to sink a bunch of resources into something that eventually is going to lose money. That is not something I'm interested in investing in. However, if there are other models out there that are different, and I, I'm a hundred percent open to that. And that, so that's why I asked the question about what is the county, what would be a county's role in something like this? And you, you highlighted some of the options, like providing the land or, or some other kind of incentive. So that's, Commissioner, if we're going to pursue this, then that's what I need to see, is the business case on this and the impacts to what we already have, to make sure that we're not cannibalizing from one to the other. And I heard you say that's not likely. So yeah, well, I would, I'd like to see how that would play out.
I agree. So Mr. Dumas, did you have any?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment. You said most of what I was going to say as it relates to Jeff was saying the two options of possibly partnering or building. And then the third option is that we do nothing, we don't move forward. And you just said that. That's what I wanted to comment about. There are actually three options.
Definitely. And of course, I don't want anything, we losing money, but we done invested in a lot of stuff, just sitting right now, losing money. I just think this is something we definitely got to take a good look at. And the people that are here that came that's in this field, I mean, we got to give them some respect as well. They've been in this field, they've been bringing money, they've been doing stuff. And we've got to, their expertise has got to be tied in. We got the president of Soccer Association of Ohio right here. He, who knows more about soccer than he does? Nobody.
So just for the record, I don't know who's in the room?
Oh, yeah, that's what I was telling, yeah, I was telling you. Yeah, yeah.
I just don't know who.
I named him earlier. We had the City of Cincinnati Assistant City Manager Natasha Hampton, representing the City of Cincinnati. We've got the Queen City Sports Plex, Christine Rock. The city manager had to leave, she was in the white and the jacket earlier. Christine, put your hand up. And Isaiah Bodrick. And they've got the Queen City Sports Plex. We've got, we had the mayor of Forest Park here, Ann Brown, and we've heard from Forest Park, now you've been having a rec center, and they wanted to see if that might be able to have, we had Pete Longo from Alloy Development, because all of the tax incentives. We had, we have the Ohio Soccer Association CEO Gordon Henderson that is here. And we have Mr. Goodyear, who's here, who is looking to develop a facility, and just happened to read about us, what we were doing. He's looking at Blue Ash, or either maybe Warren County Beach Water Park. Well, Beach Water Park didn't give us anything. I'm sorry, are you his? Michelle? Michelle Dunn, and where, who are you with? Three K Sports Academy. And they both live in Hamilton County. And who, are you all with, you, you're with the other piece? Okay, so we had some folks here who were interested. And then there's people that's watching that. Ozzy Davis and some others who could not necessarily attend. And then you've also had the Convention Visitors Bureau that you met with, as well as some others in this bigger document. So thank you all for coming. I think, Mr. Ludo, you'll get back to us. And thank you, Walter Franco from Victus Advisors. They, there was a competitive RFP, and they won the RFP for that. So I just wanted to won the RFP for that, so I just wanted to, to say that. And as Commissioner Dumas said, it was less money than we had anticipated. Came in under budget, we like that.
We do like that, Commissioner, so we will, uh...
Commissioner Dumas started smiling, like, under budget, yeah!
We'll take the discussion from today and wrap it into a, a staff report that'll come back to the board with a specific recommended next steps and make sure we're following up with the board, that we're proceeding, uh, in accordance with your policy direction.
Okay, that sounds good. And so, like I said, since it's been out there, some new people have emerged, so we make sure Victus is in touch with the new people that have come to the county and we can send them to, to them as well. Alrighty, well, thank you all. Now we go to item number two.
Can I, Madam President, can I ask that we move up item number three, because the Auditor's Office...
Yes, item number, Auditor's Office is here, yes.
And, uh, Commissioner, if you, uh, wanted to, uh, just, for the folks who, who might be here, um, there, we've got two other items on the agenda now, is it, no, no one will be offended if you take this opportunity to, uh, you're more than welcome to stay.
Yes, if you have to leave, we, we understand, I'm sorry.
Um, okay, and Christie, I think I have a, one, a couple of slides.
Yes.
Go ahead, please.
So, well, so I was just, just going to walk through a quick, uh, PowerPoint here. As the board is aware, so the Auditor's Office went through the 2023 reassessment or reappraisal, um, the, the reappraisal in 2023, um, we know, we've had discussions in this room, the property va- uh, property values and, uh, average property tax bills have gone up, uh, so, um, wanted to, the board had asked for, um, for an, the, the board had asked for a, a, uh, summary a couple of weeks ago, some things that the county could do, uh, to continue to, uh, assist property owners with property tax liability, et cetera. As the board is aware, we're putting some additional dollars into our, uh, mortgage assistance program. We're also, uh, will be coming forward in a couple, and, uh, perhaps next week or the week after with some, uh, assistance through, uh, legal aid and appraisal assistance as well. Uh, but one of the things that we had also talked about was the best way that a, uh, owner of real estate can make an impact right now on their property ta- on their property values and thus property tax bills, uh, is to, uh, successfully appeal to the Board of Revisions. Uh, for those watching at home, the Board of Revisions is a quasi judicial body set up by the Ohio Revised Code, uh, that, um, is composed and comprised of members from the Auditor's Office, Treasurer's Office, and the Board of County Commissioners, whose responsibility is to, uh, uh, conduct hearings to determine the fair market value of property that has been appraised through the Auditor's Office. So, um, as people enter into that process, um, it's just very important that they understand, uh, that there are some things that they can do to make their chances of success in challenging their property values, um, uh, to have more success in doing that. So, uh, Christie, if you could just hit, I'm just going to, and, uh, uh, very happy to have, uh, Amy Humphrey from the Auditor's Office here. Um, Amy, I'm just going to walk through these points real quick and, and then turn it over to you to, for any clarification. Uh, but first and foremost, uh, the Board of Revisions, um, Board of Revision, the, uh, if people are not aware, you have to file, uh, for, uh, for a, uh, hearing at the Board of Revision by March the 31st. Um, the Auditor's website, which is down there at the bottom, HamiltonCountyAuditor.org, uh, forward slash B O R dash A S P, um, there is a wealth of information on the Auditor's website about how to go about doing this. There is the form that you have to fill out, uh, complete D, uh, DTE. One form is on that website. There's also a really good body of information on things that you can do to help you engage in the Board of Revision process. I did talk with Greg Darvist from the Auditor's Office this morning, says they currently have over 1,400 cases filed. Um, I'm not sure where that was last year at this time, Amy, but it was heck of a lot less, right? So, um, and also, um, did just want to say that, uh, the Ohio Revised Code does in fact limit the number of times that a resident can, uh, or a property owner can appear before the Board of Revisions, uh, to once every three years. I think that's dictated by O R C 5715. Um, and there are some, there are some, uh, extenuating circumstances in the O R C, I believe as well, but for the most part, for most property owners, it's going to be once every three years until the next, uh, appraisal or triennial reassessment. Um, Christie, could you hit, there you, so, the, as I've talked with the Auditor's Office, a couple of things that they have, um, just asked that we pass along. Number one is that if you're coming into the Board of Revision's process, just recognize that the burden of proof is on you as the complainant. It's not on the Board of Revision to justify, uh, the, the property value, but it is, it is your, um, it, the burden of proof is on you, uh, to present evidence to show while that, why that value should be, that property value should be changed. The best way of doing that, um, is through a recent arms-length sale. Arms-length sale simply means, um, two parties independently approaching a transaction in their own best interest, they're not related, et cetera. So an arms-length sale, uh, is a good way of doing that, a recent independent appraisal. Um, some people may say, the, the Auditor's Office, the, the appraiser didn't get to come into my house and see that I've got holes in the floor or what have you. Well, cost estimates, uh, from contractors to show the cost to repair those deficiencies are always helpful. Um, if this is a, um, an income-producing property, income statements or expense statements, um, comparable sales in the immediate area, not property values in the immediate area, but comparable sales, um, in the immediate area. Um, and just remember that you can submit, the, I think the Auditor's Office would prefer that you submit the evidence with the complaint, but you're, you are able to submit it up to 10 days prior to that hearing. Amy and I were talking this morning that the sooner you get it in, the more likely it is that they may be able to review that and maybe not even have to schedule a hearing if they're able to review it, um, in time. A couple of other quick points, just remember as you go into a Board of Revision hearing, this is not a negotiation. Um, you know, stories that we hear coming out of Board of Revision hearings, that sometimes people will go in there and it will just be, well, I know you guys said the value is here, I think it's here, why don't we just kind of try to find a place in the middle? This is not a negotiation. Um, this is a, uh, this is a quasi judicial hearing about, that, that relies on evidence, so you have to present evidence to show, um, proof of, of your, uh, perspective on your property value. Also remember, this is not about your bill, this is about the property valuation. So it's not about the taxes you're paying, but it's about the valuation of the property itself. Uh, so I'm going to turn it over to Amy here, but I just, I just want to hit on a couple of quick things. The Mortgage Relief Program, uh, if you could go back one more slide, uh, Christie, the Mortgage Relief Program at www.fiveonethreerelief.org, um, is a good place to go to help, to get help and immediate assistance with paying, uh, your mortgage, uh, utility bills, et cetera. And then Christie, if you could hit, uh, also, again, the Hamilton County Auditor's site and also, uh, the Legal Aid Society of Greater Cincinnati, which can help people through the process, uh, of getting appraisals and getting, uh, assistance from a legal perspective with the, with the Board of Revision process. With that, Amy, I'll turn it over to you for any clarifications or things that the Auditor's Office would like to be public at this point.
Can you pull that microphone up closer to you?
Thank you.
Sean O'Brien here as well, who is the Director of Real Estate Public Services, and, um, we have both been in the boardroom as appraisers and then we are now supervising that area. Um, Sean is taking that over for me. So we are, we have a wealth of knowledge, so I'm not sure what, I will clarify one thing and say that, um, we can review the information and, um, we may agree with you and it will require still a hearing, but the property owner may not have to come down and be present, because we're in agreement. There's always a hearing the board has to approve, um, even if the recommendation from our office is that we agree with the complainant's value, there's still a hearing, but it does help the homeowner not have to come down and, and sit through the hearing and go through those things.
In terms of the number of complaints...
We need you at the microphone, I'm sorry, thank you.
In terms of the complaints, we recently, as early as last week, reviewed amount of complaints that we currently have around the 1,400 mark in relationship to what we had in 2017. That's the last reevaluation period and not an update. We are pretty much right on par, almost identical to that number. So we have not currently see, obviously, we have three or four more weeks, but as it stands, uh, as of last week, we are right on par, right on the same level in terms of the number of complaints that we had for that last reevaluation.
Interesting. Now, let me ask you, because there are a lot of people who have never, they've been paying their property taxes, now they might, you know, might complain a little bit, but they've always paid them. And now it's gotten to a point where they're like, this reevaluation is my first time, uh, you know, people are saying you can go to the reevaluation, but most people don't know what that is. And so I, one of the things we wanted to do today with the, you know, the PowerPoint or whatever we had up here to walk people through. Now, my understanding, I've got a couple of questions that they have, and it may just help someone that's watching, and we could use this video to, people hopefully can watch and go through it and have a better understanding. Um, is there, what is the cutoff date to challenge, if you will, at the Board of Revision? Is there a cutoff date?
So the cutoff date is March 31st and that's set by statute, so it can either be, um, it postmarked March 31st, or you can walk it in on March 31st.
Okay. Now, walk a person through, they go on your website to get the application?
The complaint form?
Or do they, can they, somebody, I'm not tech savvy, how did, can they come and pick up a, a form?
Yes, they can pick up a form, um, we have a box even outside of our office, if they're in the office after our hours, um, there's a box outside that has the complaint form where they can get it right from us. We have packets set up for anybody who walks in.
Okay.
And we can mail them, good point, we, we can mail them as well.
Okay. Now, someone said, and I want us, I want to clear it up, someone said that people who've never done this before, they fill it out and they ask, is there a question on there about, do you have an appraiser? Or somehow they're getting their stuff thrown out, because they say, no, I don't have an, uh, I don't have an appraiser. Is that on the form or not on the?
The form asks if you intend...
Come on up to my...
Sorry about that.
Sorry, we're trying to help.
Yeah, so the, the form does ask if you intend to provide an appraisal.
Okay.
Okay, so that is part of the form that is a state form.
Okay.
So...
And if you say no, is it, are you dismissed?
No.
Okay, so that...
The majority, specifically residentially, do not have appraisals.
Gotcha, okay.
That is, the vast majority do not provide an appraisal in front of the board.
Okay, that was a question that, um, someone had asked.
Clarify something real quick, so even, we, we don't throw any of them out, so even if we have a question, if there's an issue with a complaint maybe not being filled out completely, we will set it for a standing hearing and that way we can clarify those things to make sure that it's heard on the merits as long as it has good standing.
Good, so I wanted to get that on there. Someone asked, um, do you have to have a lawyer when you come down there?
No, no.
That's, I'm just putting this out so we could, we got to have this video out, people would know that you don't have to worry about that. So you have until March 31st to get your paperwork in?
The complaint needs to be in our office by March 31st or postmarked March 31st.
Okay, by the end of this month, gotcha, okay. All right, Vice President.
Yeah, thanks for being here, and I know it's very busy down in your office right now, so I appreciate you taking the time to be up here, uh, to clarify some things. We have had a lot of concern, obviously, from citizens about, um, the valuations, about the taxes, about the process, and so it's very helpful to have you guys come in and kind of help clarify these things. Um, so we've got, um, some money allocated for individuals that might be intimidated by the process, think they maybe do need an attorney, think they maybe do need an appraisal, uh, and so we've set aside some dollars to, to help for that. I- is there a way for us to interface with you to let people know that are already signed up, um, for the B O R, they're, they're already in the queue, that one of the, the numbers you just mentioned, and if they do feel like they need some help with an appraisal or an attorney's assistance, is there a way for us to let them know through you guys that the, these resources are available to them?
I mean, I, each property is unique, so it's hard to know exactly what that person's circumstances, know if there isn't another form of evidence that could be just as assisted, you know, as much assistance to prove the value that they think is correct. Um, I mean, certainly any information that you provided to us, we would share with everyone. I know there was, um, a community agency that reached out to us early on in the process and they only worked with certain communities and they wanted us to filter through which communities, and I didn't feel comfortable offering something to one person and not everyone, so I said, we can refer people to you and you can filter, and that didn't work out, but, so we're more than happy to do that. I just don't think that our office should be the one that decides who gets the help and who doesn't, or who goes through the eligibility, but we can certainly refer them to any program that you put in place.
Okay, yeah, we just, yeah, I understand where you're coming from. Um, so it's more of an awareness that these are, these things are available. I mean, it's hard for us to get that message out, uh, to let people know that there are some resources available, both, both by way of legal aid, which is what Jeff was just talking about, and also by way of, um, the appraisal piece, and so we're just wondering if we could partner in that way, and it sounds like we can, so...
Yes, definitely.
Okay, we're going to take you up on that. All right, thank, thank you, and thanks again for being here.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Commissioner Dumas?
Thank you. Thanks for being here, and I want to thank Amy personally, when I first started working with the Board of Revision, how you kind of introduced me to the process and how it works and all that, so thank you so much. Um, I think that's a great idea about the funding that we're giving, uh, possibly with permission, if you guys get permission just to add it onto your, your recording, that help is available, and then we say either go to the website, or if they don't have a computer, to give them a specific number they can call, like, right away, you know? So I didn't have any questions for you, but I did have a question for Jeff. Uh, Jeff, on your first, um, screen, you mentioned the arms-length sale, um, and you said two people that they don't know, um, they need to show, document a arms-length sale, and I needed more explanation. It's not a sale per se, but it's just saying a potential offer that maybe they've received from someone, or what is that?
I will defer to, to the Auditor's Office, but an arms-length sale typically relates to data on a sale that has, has occurred between two individual parties that are not related to each other, that are operating in their own self-interest in the market. That's, that's a, a sale that has occurred in the market as opposed to say, I sold this property to my son, uh, or something like that, so...
Traditionally, it would be marketed on the open market so that anyone who had the means or the desire to buy that property would have it available, they'd know it's available. So if I'm selling a property and I'm just want to sell to my neighbor, I might have a different price than if I'm putting it on the open market, I have to pay real estate fees, all those other things that kind of go into it.
Okay, I noticed on the first screen it said, document that sale, that's if you're thinking about selling, that's another piece of information you can have, you don't, everybody doesn't have that, of course, because they're not selling, okay?
Because each property is unique, so if that's specific to you and you have an arms-length transaction that you, you can provide the HUD one, um, and the settlements, any of those things that are associated with your sale that can help show those things.
But just, just to confirm, we're looking for actual sale data, right?
Correct.
Not, so Commissioner, because I think you had indicated, uh, that, like, an, an offer, I don't know if an offer, um, uh, stands in the place of actual sale data, so just for, if someone's watching at home and they're thinking about how to come, so I don't know what you guys...
I think that would be up to the board to look at the circumstances, they probably, the owner would be required to come in and then answer some questions and maybe provide some specifics regarding the offer, um, and then they would assign it weight. I don't know what they would determine, but it would probably be a very specific situation unique to that property.
As opposed to a listing price, which would probably not be...
Correct, because you don't know what it'll sell for.
Yeah, so, and thank you for that, um, but when you hear about you can only come in one time for your hearing, but there's a possibility that you could be conferring with them or trying to get more information according to what they filled out in the application, that doesn't count, of course, as a hearing, but to gather more information before they come. You do that sometimes?
You'll have to clarify that, so...
Well, you were saying about, um, you, it depends on the property and the offer, and how would you do that other than in a hearing?
The, the board would do that in the hearing, that would be up to the board designees that are there to listen, so they'd, they'd have the complaint, the complaint would come in within the appropriate timeline. If they decide to share information regarding the offer and say, hey, we have this offer, it hasn't closed yet, the board can look at it and assign it weight, they may not give it weight, but I can't speak to that, that will have to be something that the board designees look at and review.
Okay, and I, I talked to Jeff earlier today about the O R C, the company that said you can only do it once and all of that, which is...
There, there are some extenuating, and I think Jeff mentioned that, so if you have a sale sometime in between that three-year period, if you have new construction or damage to the property, um, then you can come back in and you can go through the process again.
Thanks, that's all.
Any other extenuating?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, and a change in occupancy. So, you change maybe from residential to commercial, or something along those lines.
All right.
Thank you.
And without those extenuating circumstances, then it's three years, it's a three-year wait before you can come back.
Yeah, to the next rebalance cycle. So, depending on when you file, so, right now, this is the first year after the reappraisal. The triennial will be in three years, so you have this window. If you wait until, like, we had some folks that waited till '22 to file, and then they only got the benefit of that BOR decision for one year.
Gotcha. That's the part that gets a little confusing. And to those who are watching, we say "board" because we call ourselves also the board. I want to be real clear. We're talking about the Board of Revision.
Board of Revision, yes.
Because we've got quite a few boards. And I do appreciate you coming up as just, as educated as people can be, I think will be helpful. Is it any way that, I don't know how it's operating, but legal aid, is there any way they can be onsite, or do they not, they can't go in with the people? How, what does that process look like?
I think they would operate, if they're representing a homeowner, then they would come in just as any attorney, and that homeowner would let us know that they're there and they're able to speak on their behalf. We have private attorneys that have come in and we, they didn't submit information ahead of time, but they showed up on the day of the hearing. And as long as the property owner is giving proof of that and is saying it's okay for that person to come and speak on their behalf, usually, they're with them if we don't know ahead of time. Otherwise, we need documentation that says you're allowing this person to come in and speak on your behalf. But if, even if they come in that day, we can work those details out.
You can work with them, okay. Well, I appreciate you taking the time. We wanted to answer, hopefully, someone can see this video, maybe they're watching, and help them answer any questions that can help. You, March 31st is the last day to get your paperwork in, but you won't have, then you will schedule hearings. So, people don't feel like, "Oh, if I don't get a hearing by the 31st."
Some people are waiting on appraisals to be turned back into them, so they may want to make sure they capture their complaint and have it in on time. And then, as soon as they get their appraisal, they'll submit that to us. So, or they're waiting on a cost to repair, they're waiting on whatever their documentation is. So, they can turn that into us, but it's best they get it to us as soon as possible, and then that way, we can review it. We may be in agreement, and then that saves them a trip downtown.
Gotcha. Well, I appreciate it, and Jeff, thanks for the PowerPoint. And our county commission board, we put, we had put $5 million in 2021 for back property taxes and mortgages. And then, when this term, this year, we had a little less than a million, and then we were able to vote on another $700,000. That people can go to 513relief.org and try to apply, or they can go to the 513 Relief Bus. So, those are the areas that we're trying to also be helpful to people. So, thank you all so much.
Thank you for your time, Amy.
We really appreciate your time.
Have a good afternoon.
Thank you.
Our next is ARPA. Welcome back, Holly.
Thank you. This should be a pretty straightforward presentation. So, today, the presentation on the American Rescue Plan Act includes options and recommendations for reallocating $1.4 million. So, just as a quick refresher, if you want to move forward, oh, I have it, sorry. Our, Hamilton County was awarded almost $159 million that must be obligated by the end of 2024 and spent by the end of 2026. You can see here, just for an update, that as of the end of January, we have obligated or expended $132 million. So, over 80% of the allocation has been either spent or obligated. So, over, this is just really quickly, I don't, I can't do a presentation without making some highlights so the public understands where all our funding is going. I just want to highlight a couple of things really quickly on this slide because it's a lot on here, and this is only about half of all that we're doing. Related to the Mortgage Assistance Program, this number is old as of just about an hour ago. Thank you, Director Patton. There's over 1,200 households have been helped with mortgage assistance through the ARPA funds. Another update, just so everyone's aware, the Construction Training Program that we've partnered with, with Urban League, has started and launched, and they have 15 participants that are enrolled in that program, which is great because we've all heard about the need for folks to join the construction industry. So, we're happy to see that get started. And I do want to also point out with the Mobile Crisis Team, I think the board knows that expanded in April to 24/7. And since its inception in April, they have served over 2,700 unique individuals with that, with that new expanded program. So, just a quick highlight there. But as we've talked about over the past few years with ARPA, we know that over time, programs wouldn't spend the total budgeted amount. That just, that just happens with programs, and that we would reassess those programs and the balances at a pretty regular pace. Here's a heads up, we'll be doing that much more frequently this year because we do have to obligate the funds by the end of the year. So, with our team, our small but mighty team of Ellie Coatedad and Sarah Adams and I, we did a quick reassessment, and we are recommending again, $1.47 million for reallocation. Our recommendations are based on a few key tenets. One, of course, is Board of County Commissioner priorities. The second is focusing on problems that will solve critical issues and provide long-term benefit, since, again, these are one-time dollars. And lastly, given the time constraints of ARPA, we want to minimize the creation of any new programs. Instead, can we tag on to existing programs to, again, just be mindful of those time constraints? So, the $1.47 million, just so the board's aware of where that money is coming from, almost roughly half, a little over half, is coming from programs that have closed out and had remaining balances in them. The second is with our Home Repair Loan Program that we will be starting this year, we are recommending that $700,000 that was originally allocated from ARPA will be, we're partnering with Community Development to take some of their funds and have a combined program to help with the longevity of the Home Repair Program. So, $700,000 will be removed from ARPA, but will come out of CDBG. So, again, that's where the $1.47 comes from. So, with our recommendations, we would like to recommend the majority of the funding, $872,000, to go towards more affordable housing, given, as the board is aware, the continued need for housing production in our region, its long-term transformational impact, and of course, board priority on this particular issue over the past several years. As the board knows, we do have an existing agreement with Cincinnati Development Fund in the amount of $33.5 million for new or renovated housing. So, the mechanism to deploy this funding, if the board so chooses and authorizes, would be to amend their existing agreement to add this amount to their, to their current agreement. The second is a sewer issue. The current ARPA plan has $9 million allocated for sewer and stormwater projects. Of this funding, $5 million has already been provided to Whitewater Township to extend sewer along State Route 128. $3.6 million is being obligated as we speak for several stormwater projects in communities that the board was briefed on a couple of months ago. And previously, $360,000 was deployed, I think it was 2022, to fix some sewer cross-connections in a neighborhood in the Kenwood area. So, what we are recommending with this funding is reallocating $440,000 to the sewer line item to fund another similar sewer issue in North College Hill. This issue was identified by Hamilton County Public Health, that eight homes are discharging to a combined sewer located behind their homes. That combined sewer, though, discharges directly to a stream more than a mile from their home. These, this issue was not caused by the homeowners. So, the total project cost is $480,000. We just want to reallocate $440,000 to get to that total. If authorized by the board, this would be administered by Hamilton County Public Health. Craig Davidson with Public Health is here if there are specific questions on this program. But this, again, is one of those projects that is a critical issue and a one-time fix for these homeowners, again, through no fault of their own. And lastly, just due to basically a typo in a previous reallocation, we need to move $164,000 back into broadband. So, with that, in terms of next steps, happy to take additional board feedback either now or over the next week. In terms of these recommendations, we would like to finalize those after we hear that input and bring forward a resolution at a board meeting, hopefully sometime in March, so we can, again, get these funds obligated and make sure the money is spent according to ARPA timelines.
Thank you. I'll open it up. Vice President Dreyhouse.
Thank you. Thank you for the report, Holly. I don't have any questions about this. I don't know about the other offices, but I am often being approached by people that would like to help us spend our ARPA dollars. So, but as you say, time is running out on some of this money, and I know we're going to have this process continue. So, what is the timing here? I guess you would like to get this done as quickly as possible?
Yes, because we will be doing more frequent reallocation recommendations this year. We're going to come down and look really closely at current agreements we have with especially grantees who should be closing out by the end of the year. And if they aren't spending their money, we're going to work with them to pull back some of that funds if we don't think they're going to spend it. So, we will be coming forward to the board probably every couple of months, potentially with some reallocation requests.
Okay. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dumas? Thank you for your presentation. Just a couple of questions. It's great that 80% has either been spent or allocated. I'm so proud of the board and also the team. I did have one question, though, about the youth suicide prevention. One grantee did not accept funding. I was just wondering, who didn't accept funding?
Grant Us Hope. They, Grant Us Hope had to turn it down. I think they had some structural organizational issues going on. Sarah, do you know anything? Sorry, I'd like to bring up Sarah Adams, if that's okay.
Afternoon. They just had some structural changes within their actual program. They were actually working with the actual for-profit organization, Grant Us Hope, and unfortunately, their contract was not extended. Grant Us Hope had decided to try to come into this area and kind of move forward on their own with those things. So, they were just unable to meet that contract need any further.
Okay. Thank you. My concern is that this was a priority, is a priority for the board. I totally agree not to start any new programs, but just wondering, since we do have some time, is there any other entity or entities that we could allocate some of the money for the purpose of youth suicide prevention? Because as we know, suicide is going up, it's not going down. So, just wondering how we could still fill that gap in that area.
I think if the board wanted us to pursue that, we would have to put out grant applications for that to be a fair process. So, that's what the mechanism would be to deploy those funding.
Okay, so I'm just mentioning that, that not all of it, we don't have to use all of it, but just wondering. Or, I can ask this question. What other agencies or entities are dealing with this youth suicide prevention? I know the Mental Health Board does, but any other ones?
I think we had four other entities that received funding under the Youth Suicide Prevention Program.
So, this was specifically for the ones that couldn't accept, the one that could not accept this? Okay. I'm good with that.
Okay.
Thanks. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I want to kind of look at it a little bit more because there have been a lot of, you know, different people coming since we have allocated our original allocations. The other thing I had mentioned, I'm going to just put it on the table, was our CDF, and I know we're looking into it. But I wanted to make sure that if we're doing all this investment on affordable housing on the front end, I wanted to make sure that our projects are tied to the deeds of these projects so they don't flip, you know, five years from now, like, somebody sells it and now it becomes million-dollar condos, if you will. So, I wanted to make sure, I know we're looking into that, but before I go with any additional funding, I want to know about that. Because I think that's the, that's for the future. And I know I've been around now long enough to know there's projects that were started one way when I was on city council, and then you look back now, like, what in the world? This wasn't what the intention was. So, I wanted to make sure that if we're putting this money for affordable housing, that it continues in perpetuity beyond us.
CDF is providing a response for that question.
Yeah, so I want to wait till I get the response till I give them some more money because I think that that's a very important piece that needs to be in there for putting funding in it. So, but anyway, thank you for this. And I guess you'll give us our timeline, but just-
I think if it's okay with the board, I'll circle back to see if you have any other feedback and move forward from there, hopefully this month if possible.
Yep. Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have going into executive session. I make a motion to go into executive session. I make a motion to go into executive session pursuant to RC Section 12122G2, I should have that memorized by now, to discuss acquisition of property.
Second.